Call this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Palmer?
Here.
Capora?
Here.
Lopez?
Yeah.
Mandel?
Here.
Mayor McDonald?
Here.
Chip Camilla?
Here.
Chief Worf?
Here.
Chief Taylor?
Here.
Sarah Andrews?
Here.
At any time before the next council meeting, council can and may hold an executive session. I will accept the motion to approve minutes of the November tenth meeting.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Capora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Manville?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Um, anybody have the paperwork for tonight? I think we took here all that last time. So moving into correspondence, um, just a couple of quick housekeeping, uh, notes here. Just a reminder that anybody with garbage pickup, it's usually on Thursday. That will be done Friday this week because of Thanksgiving holiday. And also something that council and I and Mr. Luca will have to consider is the possibility of maybe limiting, uh, attendance to council meetings, live streaming council meetings, or a combination of the two, uh, due to the uptick in COVID cases and also to kind of reflect what the school district is doing currently with their operations. So that's something that will be talked about before the next council meeting and, uh, we'll have a plan in place and we'll let everybody know about it as soon as we do. Uh, those two pieces of information being said, I'd like to move on to recognize Mrs. Sarah Andrews, as I'm sure a lot of us want to, on, uh, her upcoming retirement. Almost thirty-four years and we're sad to see you go. Um, but like I said, I'd like to take a minute to thank and congratulate Mrs. Sarah Andrews on her retirement from our Office of Economic and Community Development. From the complete and total transformation of Main Street and our downtown business district to the revitalization of Elm Street and the neighborhoods surrounding it, to the millions of dollars and grants that Sarah has secured to assist in the economic growth and prosperity of Bradford, it is undeniable that her fingerprints will be left on our community for the next hundred years at a minimum. Under her guidance, the OECD has made visible invest- investments in our city that in some way benefit each and every person who lives here. She has spent nearly thirty-four years helping to make Bradford a community that is in many ways a model and reference for how tax dollars and grants should be reinvested into society. I think it is extremely important to revisit a topic that was brought up at our last council meeting, the millions of dollars that Sarah and the OECD staff were able to secure to invest in the BRMC. Several years ago, the OECD secured three million dollars in grant funds to help with the expansion of the emergency department, the new ambulatory surgery facility, the cancer treatment center, the neuroscience center for cardiology, and outpatient services, along with medical office suites. This investment by the city of Bradford was meant to help BRMC increase revenues and help sustain long-term viability of the hospital. I hope that during these times of uncertainty with the future of BRMC, that the leadership over there reciprocates the actions of our OECD and continues to assist in the long-term viability of our community by providing the services and procedures that have literally saved some of our citizens' lives or at the bare minimum improved the quality of their lives. I have only worked for Sarah for eleven months, but in that short amount of time, she has shown me that she is an individual who truly loves and believes in the city of Bradford and the limitless potential that our area possesses. We are fortunate that her prospective replacement, Mr. Shane Oshman, shares all of the same attributes that have made Sarah such an outstanding leader. On behalf of the city of Bradford, thank you and congratulations, Mrs. Andrews. So at this time, if you'd like to say something, you can, and I know there's a lot of, a lot of people up here that would like to say something also, so.
Well, thank you so much for your kind words. It means a lot to me and I just want to thank all of you and Mayor Reel back here, former Mayor Reel, and other mayors that I've worked with and council people. Without your support, we certainly wouldn't be doing what we're doing. And so everybody's got a role. It's been a partnership. It hasn't just been me, it's been the employees at the OECD, a team that we have down there, and all the partners that we develop in our community over the years. It's been phenomenal, um, the people that really love our community, um, that I, I work with every day. And I just want to say thank you and, um, I hope to be around to continue to, to support Shane and the rest of the OECD staff over the next year or so. And, um, and, uh, once again, just thank everyone for, I, I'm very grateful for having this opportunity to have done this, a career. It's been a good career and I, I'm very thankful for that. So thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah. Want to just start at this end and come around?
Sarah, I've had the pleasure of working relatively close with you for the last eleven years to, so to say thank you for your service to the city seems very minimal. The work and the funding that today's OECD Office of Economic and Community Development have been able to obtain on behalf of the city of Bradford. New homes, businesses, and critical infrastructure have been built, refurbished, and renewed while you were at the helm. The value of these items go well beyond the millions of dollars spent. As with, without your wisdom and expertise to get the funds available to, to complete these projects, we would not only be where we are, but in a place substantially behind where we are. As we all know, the tax dollars in the city of Bradford do not go far enough to make these things a reality. Sarah, I just recently had a conversation with someone who had been involved with the Pennsylvania Department of Office of Economic Development, and I will quote what they said. She is known statewide as the best in the community development. That is what I am thanking you for, for being the best, for what you've done for our community. I wish you health, happiness, and the best of luck in whatever your future holds. Sarah, you're going to be missed.
Thank you.
Uh, Sarah, uh, obviously just starting the second, my second term here, but it's been a, a pleasure working with you. I thank you for your dedication, for all that you have done for the city, and I do, uh, same as Chris and the mayor have said, uh, all the best in your retirement and I hope we do see you around.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes, Sarah, I've had the pleasure of working with you for seven years and I've enjoyed it very much. I don't want to necessarily repeat everything that, that's already be said, already been said. You've certainly done, done all of that. Just wanted to let you know that, um, you should enjoy, enjoy your retirement, um, to the fullest. You've certainly earned it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Uh, just a few words and, uh, I'd like to say thank you, Sarah, for your long and, uh, dedicated service to the OECD and the city of Bradford. I can remember thinking, uh, back when Ray McMahon, uh, was retiring and, and this, this dates me, but, you know, oh no, what, what are we going to do now? And then, uh, and then came Sarah and continued just a excellent and, uh, longtime legacy of, uh, service and economic development. I would have said excellent job and kudos, uh, you've raised the bar. Um, I've often thought and been impressed and taken with your ability to, uh, put all the parts and pieces together and funding and add packages and, uh, matching funds. Uh, just so impressive and, uh, such a skill. All while expertly perpetuating the, your and our agency, the OECD. And thank you very much, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Uh, Sarah, I've had the pleasure of serving approximately two and a half terms with you and to state what Chris brought up, I've been to several conferences and I was amazed by what people would say about our community, the community development in the city of Bradford and the only thing that could be attributed to was your leadership. And it, it, it really impressed me that our small city of Bradford was able to do that for all these years. Since I'm the only one that's retired among this group, I'll offer you a little bit of advice. Believe me, there's not enough hours in the day once you retire. So enjoy yourself. I know there's many things that you like to do when you're on vacation. Don't let those things pass by. Do them. Congratulations, good luck. And, uh, I know we picked a very good replacement for you in Shane Oshman.
We did, thank you. And Brad, I just wanted to mention that probably if anyone on council over the years, you're the one I've worked closest with and I just want to thank you for all the support that you've given me over the years. There's been a lot of talks we've had, uh, you know, on different variety of subjects and I've, I've, uh, appreciated all of your support and your advice over the years. So I just want to thank you, Brad, for, for being that, that, kind of that go-to person when I needed to talk to someone on, on city, about city business. So that's, that means a lot to me. So thank you very much, Brad.
Thank you for those words. All right, thank you. Um, let's see. Any other correspondence? I think you've probably got about everything done up here for that. All right. So we'll move on to the petition and hear visitors segment of the meeting. So if there's anybody that would like to address council, please stand, state your name, and let us know what you have to say. Garrett, go ahead.
Evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. Uh, for anybody that doesn't know, my name's Garrett Newhouse and this is my fiancee, Angelique Gobin. Uh, we'd like to thank the council and the mayor for having us tonight. Um, first off, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor McDonald for the suggestion to be here. Uh, he's been nothing but supportive of our, uh, public involvement and our ideas that we have to try and stimulate Bradford's community. Uh, what we're here tonight for is to, uh, to propose our sports league that we're trying to do. It's called Bar League, Bradford Area Adult Recreational League. So over the years, we've participated in multiple different recreational sports leagues throughout the area, given Eldred, Smithport, Holy Anne, um, Warren. And what we came up with is they're stimulating their community. They're getting people involved, they're giving the opportunity for people to come out, network, be physical, build relationships with everybody. So what we'd like to do is propose a spring and fall adult kickball league here in town. Now, we've gone through and looked at different, uh, different locations throughout the town, the township, the city, and unfortunately, we run into one major thing and that being lights. So we participate in a kickball league over in Holy Anne for the last three years and it generally takes place in the fall. That said, it's about twelve different teams, about a hundred and forty people. Everybody has a good time, but the thing about it is everybody uses the resources they have in the community to get bar sponsorships, get local businesses to sponsor, so that way they're getting together, they're becoming more active, they're playing the sport, but then they're getting together and re-stimulating the community by going to those restaurants and bars and helping out with income and everything. So what we've done is we've put together, and I'm sorry, we were a little bit late to the party, we do have a copy to provide once we're finished, is a spring co-ed kickball league and a fall co-ed league, uh, given April through June and September through October, post-COVID, of course, because we don't know what's going to happen next year. But what we'd like to do is strive for an outlet to socially gather in a productive manner, and our goal is to bring recognition to the capabilities of our town that has available. We know the individuals in our community travel to other towns and they inquire with different local businesses for sponsorship, make agreements such as coming into their establishments before and after each game each week. And we like to support our local businesses to give them these types of opportunities. We'd like to promote physical activity and even more, we want to focus on engaging the University of Pitts or Bradford with our citizens as well. So that being said, I know, uh, if there's any questions after this, Chip might have some because we would like to propose this happens at Callahan Park, only because that would be the only facility that gives us the lighting we'll need in the fall. Generally, the games, oh boy.
Garrett, there's no lighting in the fields.
Oh, there's no lighting?
None.
I'll sit back down. No, I'm just kidding. Um, yeah, so that was one thing that we were running into the issue because when we play over in Holy Anne, the games generally start between six, seven, and eight. And as everybody knows, right around that time in the fall, it tends to get pretty dark around five thirty, six o'clock. So, and we can keep going just in case anybody has any further ideas of what we're trying to do. Again, this is just based on trying to find location.
Can I suggest Pitt? They have the men's alcohol league out there.
Yeah, so, um, we can suggest Pitt and again, we can go have that conversation with the president and see what they can propose. We have brought, I, brought the idea to them already, we just haven't been able to get all the way around back to them to get a meeting. But we do have, uh, some other forms and everything as well that Angelique can discuss.
I have gone through and created some waivers and again, these are, um, subject to location. We've gone through and quoted the insurance for liability and the liquor liability as well as it would be, uh, BYLB type of league, or at least that is the, the goal. Um, I do have a good relationship with, like you said, we play in Holy Anne, um, at the four half field and, uh, we get a lot of advice from, from them and they do something very similar. So, uh, whether that place be Callahan or not, we would so like to look within the city and start this league, so.
And I was able to find out, um, Mr. Luca and I talked about this a little bit, and if Callahan Park was going to be the place that you, you know, you were able to end up using, that, um, it would require a permit, you know, from your league, obviously. And also, we'd need to change, uh, certain languages, uh, to chapter one fifty-two of the city code as far as like where alcohol can be consumed. Cause it's, there's specific language in there that, you know, limits where you can be with that and everything that goes with that. But that's, you know, that's down the road and it's just something that would be part of the process if, uh, you know, you ended up, you know, being able to use Callahan Park.
And again, we don't think alcohol is a complete necessity. However, if you're going to do an adult league, it's.
It's been part of the plan.
Yeah, it's been part of it. And unfortunately, if we sit there and tell people, hey, you know, it's dry, we unfortunately might not get the turnout that we're expecting or hoping for. Cause again, a lot of the money that we'd be able to get from these teams for their, uh, registration and everything would be to go pay for, you know, uh, if there's any maintenance that needs done with the field after games, um, insurance, equipment.
I was hoping that with Callahan, we'd be able to make the donation to the city too as well. So that was, that was part of our, our hopes in using Callahan.
Well, I, I appreciate that. Yeah, even the idea of being considered to host is, is pretty nice, but, um, I'll continue the dialogue with you guys too to help you find a home for this. I think it's needed to keep, uh, recreation and money in the area.
Yep.
So people aren't leaving town to find something to do, especially in our age group. That's a big one.
Yeah. And over the years, I've done many different things between dodgeball, volleyball, kickball, um, uh, soccer, and unfortunately, I haven't done anything within the terms of the city of Bradford in many years. So again, having that outside experience, the fundamentals of setting, uh, setting up a sports league and everything, yeah, it's not very difficult, uh, in, with my experience to do. However, we just need to find a location to do it and we'd like to start small by doing what we know, what we're familiar with as kickball. And again, eventually expand into other opportunities to get more people involved in different activ-, different physical sports and start up maybe, uh, like volleyball down at the Grace Lutheran Gym because we know the YMCA used to, but again, they switched everything over to Holy Anne. Um, so again, we're just starting out small, but we'd like to develop this into a possible three to four recreational sport league throughout the entire year.
I appreciate that. It's, it's very, um, forward looking. I think, I think it's pretty cool. Um, at this time, uh, seeing how we're kind of hamstrung on a location, are there any questions from council or city administration, any comments on, on what they're trying to do? Like I said, if, if this does stall out for tonight, I'm still more than happy to work with you guys outside of here to.
That would be great, thank you.
We're expecting this to stall out still a little bit because we don't see a spring.
Well, and we've got these to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Hey Garrett, I got one question for you and I'm, I'm thinking in my mind probably like the, with the school district and the high school and the, the field up there, there might be some hangups there, but have you approached them, have you discussed it with them at all?
I, I've discussed it with an outside source who works for the school, but I don't know if they'll have any actual jurisdiction in making that determination if it would be okay. He said he'd be on board it, up for it, but he's been looking as well. I don't, um, Jason Blatchley is the senior guidance counselor, he's our neighbor.
Okay.
So we talked to him a little bit about it. He said he would bring it up to, um, I don't know who the principal is actually anymore. Um, but he said he would bring it up further up the pipeline for us, we just haven't heard anything back.
Okay.
Uh, again, I know we would run into some, uh, probably alcohol jurisdiction levels within the school district, uh, because again, we thought the turf would have been perfect.
Yep.
Because we could split it down, that's what they do over in Holy Anne, it's one big giant field, there's two games going on at the same time, and they've got one field in the corner, one field in the corner, and they go back and forth, the turf would be perfect. Uh, but again, um, I don't know how much leeway the school would be okay with that. And if it's alcohol-free, then, you know, it's alcohol-free and we can give it a trial run for the first year and see what happens and see what the turnout would be.
Yep.
So it's something we can certainly look into.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Very good. Anyone, anyone else here? All right, well, thank you guys so much for coming tonight.
Absolutely. Unfortunately, you know, we do, we have another meeting we gotta get to.
Sure.
If that's okay, we don't go bad.
By all means. But yeah, uh, don't be afraid to reach out and we'll, we'll see what we can do, or I, what I can do.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Seriously.
Uh, it's just one. Unfortunately, it's just one giant packet, uh, again, we were.
I'll make a copy and email it up.
Thank you. And if you guys have any other questions, please follow up at any given time. I know Mayor McDonald has our contact information.
Sir.
Thank you.
Thank you too. Thank you.
Sarah, congratulations on your retirement.
Okay, uh, the two members of the public left, Tom and Shane. Tom?
Sarah, I didn't, Sarah, I didn't, I didn't realize they were on your new, and we can do accolades this evening and I don't have much more to offer other than what everybody's already said, but it's a pleasure working with you for fourteen years. It's not just that they know you statewide. I remember standing in the, in the spotlight, one the other in the state, accepting awards because of the work that you've done. We've received numerous statewide awards because of your work and, uh, I was proud to do that. So thank you, thank you for all your work, but I'm sure I bumped any up the lake or something, but, uh, that's the luck I never had, I never had.
Thank you.
That being said, what I'm about to say, I don't want to diminish from your accolades this evening, so, um, I've been in, I hope you don't mind if I sit, sit down. I've been in the building numerous times recently to conduct city business, uh, pay bills and, uh, pick up some mail that had come here for me. And I was around a lot of the, our, our fine city employees and it was, really started to bother me when I started to think about a few things. We have a lot of dedicated city employees across the board, whether it's elected officials, authorities, different departments, and that, what bothered me most was in reference to you, Jim, in a comment last year that disgruntled city employee had made on Facebook, where they compared the employees in, in this building to cockroaches that need fumigated. And you'd liked the comment, and if you don't believe in your screenshots, so the comment and like it. I felt, felt bad, so I'll offer the screenshots, the ones that you disfaced and you liked, the ones that you actually wrote yourself. You also disparaged other, many other people in this room, members of council, department heads, you referred to the wheeling deal in OECD and how that needed to, to work over. Um, even disparaged, uh, now city administrator Luca when he was chief Luca. You did this all publicly. Couple of months before city council even made a decision to hire Chris Luca as the city administrator, you had posted in your, on your own page, your own word, that if we were to make that choice, it would be catastrophic, catastrophic and it would be awful. And those are the type of practices that needed to stop with the city. And I could go on, the water authority comments about, um, that we need to appoint better people to water authorities so they could do more than put lipstick on a pig. That's all in here if you want to take a look at it. There was, uh, comments made about the, the street work that the DP, that the DPW does in, as far as resurfacing being lipstick on a pig. And you did that all, that all very, very publicly. And I know you, you make yourself, portray yourself off to be a good Christian man and I don't know you, I don't know you personally, I don't want to know you personally, but what I, what I've seen you, you do publicly versus what someone that would understand how to achieve, uh, say forgiveness or redemption or something, I think you, you will, not me, I'm not asking for apology, but you, you publicly disparaged a lot of people, um, insinuated they were corrupt, incompetent, even criminals. And I'm just wondering if someday, you're going to man up and show some leadership and apologize for what you said and, and embarrassing and, and being disgraceful towards.
Well, Tom, thank you for bringing all of this to light.
There's plenty more.
And it was very public, you're right. And in the eleven years I've been in this position, I have made.
Eleven years, eleven work.
Eleven months. Thanks. Yeah, I know you're there fat chicken, that's good, thanks. But in the eleven months I've been in this position, I have made amends with the people I've needed to. Um, I have talked personally with the people I've needed to, and you know what? I was wrong about a lot, Tom, because on the outside looking in, there was a lot I didn't know. And there's a lot I've learned. And I have nothing but the utmost respect for the workers of this city. There were things I said that were wrong and they were misguided and frankly, I was ignorant to a lot of the facts, sir. And, uh, if you want a public apology, here it is. I am sorry for the things I said that disparaged the city workers in any way, shape, or form. And I have made amends personally with, I think, everybody you referenced there. So since, since you're not looking for an apology, I'm not going to give you one, but I'm just going to tell you what I did do and I have taken care and I have maintained healthy working relationships with everybody I'm in touch with down here in the city.
If I could follow up, just, uh, I know, I know there's a few people that I talked about there that have not received a personal apology from you.
Okay. Well.
If you want to shoot me an email, I'll let you know who they are.
Or they can reach out to me too, if they feel slighted. I'd like to make things right. So thank you for work, thank you for working on their behalf, Tom. I appreciate it. Um, Shane, do you have anything tonight? Okay, that being said, we will cover some old business. Item A, bill number ten, ordinance general file number three zero seven eight point two two five, the twenty twenty-one wage ordinance. I will accept the motion.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Capora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
CO five four nine two, general file number three zero seven eight point two two five, calendar number ten, sessions two thousand twenty. amend ordinance general file number three zero seven eight point two two five. An ordinance of the city of Bradford, McKean County, Pennsylvania, providing for the salaries and wages of various city employees.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Capora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. We've got some new business. Item A, it's bill number eleven, ordinance, general file number three two eight four, twenty twenty-one city of Bradford budget. I'll accept the motion.
Motion? Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Capora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor, or Mayor McDonald, sorry.
Yes. Yes.
CO five four nine three, sessions twenty twenty, general file number three two eight four, calendar number eleven. An ordinance of the city of Bradford, county of McKean, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania appropriating the specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the city, the city government as herein after set forth during the year twenty twenty-one.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Capora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Item B, under new business, bill number twelve, ordinance general file number three two eight five, twenty twenty-one mileage ordinance. I'll accept the motion.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Capora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
CO five four nine four, general file number three two eight five, calendar number twelve, session twenty twenty. CO five four nine four, general file number three two eight five, calendar number twelve, session two thousand twenty. An ordinance for the city of Bradford, McKean County, Pennsylvania, fixing the tax rate, tax rate for the city purposes on all real property.
Tom, move. Okay.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor McDonald, city council members and city taxpayers. In accordance with section three six eight zero nine of the third-class city code, the balanced two thousand twenty-one city of Bradford budget ordinance is submitted here with. This year saw many changes, challenges, and hardships for the residents and the city of Bradford. The twenty twenty-one budget is presented with no tax increase and a reduction in six hundred and forty thousand dollars in projected expenditure, expenditures compared with the twenty twenty budget. This is the first city budget I feel confident in the projections. The normal contractual obligations for twenty twenty-one are included along with projected increases for normal conduct of city businesses. Pensions obligations make up a large part of the budget. These obligations are determined by the pension actuary and change every year. As explained before the city, before, the city is mandated by the third-class city code on some of these benefits. As council and the city administrator explored options to relieve the yearly MMO, a new avenue was approached. This should benefit future councils from the year-end shock of the large MMO payment. I cannot express my gratitude for the dedication and hard work demonstrated by the city administrator, department heads, and employees devoted to the twenty twenty-one budget. At this time, at this time last year, we were projecting a seven mil increase in taxes that did not happen. In twenty twenty-one, the city may be able to increase our capital reserve. The balanced twenty twenty budget rate is as follows. General revenue, eleven point one five mils. Bradford Public Library, point one five mils. Interest, point three, three point three nine mils. Recreation, three point eight three mils. The total rate for twenty twenty-one is eighteen point five two mils. Respectfully submitted. I apologize, I should have read that before we voted on that.
Thank you, sir. He's got it. It's just a lot of pages.
Got it. Number three five nine seven five, exonerate the city treasurer for collecting certain twenty twenty city property taxes, accounts, and finances. Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Number three five nine seven six, authorize execution of a contract renewal between Vision Benefits of America and the city of Bradford for managed vision care accounts and finances. Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number three five nine seven seven, appoint Shane Oshman as executive director of the Office of Economic and Community Development, OECD.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Authorized transfer of pension fund monies, accounts, and finances. Sorry, that is, forgot to say this was three five nine seven eight.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number three five nine seven nine, approve payment to P and D Emergency Services LLC, police.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Number three five nine eight zero, approve payment to IA Construction Corporation Liquid Fuel.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Number three five nine eight one, approve payment to Hall Electric Inc. Parks.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Number three five nine eight two, approve payment to C and S Ice Resurfacing Services Inc. Parks.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Number three five nine eight three, approve payment to New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company Incorporated Streets.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Number three five nine eight four, approve payment to IA Construction Corporation Streets.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Number three five nine eight five, approve payment to Teleflex Ambulance.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number three five nine eight six, authorize the proper officer of the city of Bradford to execute an agreement with Jeff Andrews to provide technical consultation and construction inspection for twenty twenty-one community and operational improvement projects, OECD.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number three five nine eight seven, authorize the proper officers of the city of Bradford to execute a contract with Sarah Andrews to provide consulting and administrative support services for twenty twenty-one office operations, OECD.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number three five nine eight eight, authorize the proper offices of the city of Bradford to execute an employment agreement with Shane Oshman as executive director of the Office of Economic and Community Development, OECD.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Now, let's see if I can get this right. Three five nine eight nine, authorize transfer monies from the general obligation bond two thousand, two thousand twelve savings, accounts, and finances. Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number three five nine nine zero, approve payment to Gauls LLC Police.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Number three five nine nine one, authorize the disposal of a nineteen ninety-eight Dodge thirty-five hundred one-ton dump truck streets.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Number three five nine nine two, approve payment to Gorman Enterprises Fire.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Number three five nine nine three, approve payment to Barnhart Davis Company Streets.
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Number three five nine nine four, approve payment, emergency, um, there maybe be a two in there? Approve payment to emergency medical products, ambulance?
Second.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Pecora?
Yes.[1563.05]